14-31, I recognize the author, Speaker Panglinen.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill Number 514-31COR be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to just discuss the bill briefly.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as everyone in this government is committed to ensuring that we find all the available resources necessary to pay past due as well as income tax refunds going forward, we did that with several bond borrowing authorizations. In one of the bond borrowing authorizations, the governor had requested that, as part of the proceeds of the bond, we set aside $18 million to pay for the health insurance premiums for FY 2012, just in case the appropriated revenue to pay for that, which was the settlement between the Guam Water Works Authority and the order by the PUC for them to pay pursuant to public law a reimbursement of the general fund to help us pay these refunds, or to help us cover operational expenses, of which health insurance was one of them, to cover that if the settlement, if the order did not come in on time. As you know, the Guam Water Works Authority challenged the order of the PUC with the Superior Court of Guam, and there was a stay on making the deposit to the general fund to pay for the health insurance refund. And so the governor requested in the last series of bonds that $18 million from those proceeds be set aside to cover then the health insurance premiums. Well, prior to the floating of those bonds and the proceeds of those bonds, we actually paid the health insurance premiums from other sources within the government of Guam, from other revenue collections, and we deferred paying other obligations of the government and instead made sure that we paid the health insurance premiums on time from the current collections. Well, we know that we paid the operational requirements of the government, health insurance, we paid the payroll, we paid other obligations, and the obligation that we used, that we deferred paying were the income tax refunds. And so what this does is basically allows then the authorization that the governor received in the bond to pay for the refund, to pay for the health insurance premiums, which have already been paid, to now be redirected and allow him to use those proceeds of the bonds to pay for outstanding income tax refunds. So really, what it does, Madam Speaker, is it just redirects the payment and the authorization available to the governor to not use, not only use the health insurance premiums, those proceeds, but because those obligations have been paid, we now go and pay what was deferred, what was not paid, in order to pay the health insurance premiums, and those are the refunds. And so this bill would allow the governor that flexibility of then directing that $18 million in proceeds to go towards the tax refunds, Madam Speaker. Thank you, and I certainly ask my colleagues for the support on this measure. Thank you, Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Speaker Panglinen, on the motion, anyone who'd like to speak on the motion, there being none, so to send, on the motion to send Bill 514-31 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Guthers is not here. Senator Rodriguez is not here. I'm going through the bills, but I don't see, I'm gonna, to do a set aside, 532, well, 524, 532, 237, he was here, Senator Tonyada. 417, well, Senator Blaschis.
442.
442, yes, he's present, Senator Frank Blasch Jr. Boy, you're the only one. Ten bills.
Is this his 10th bill?
A 10th bill in one session, not bad. Absolutely.
Madam Speaker, I move that we place Bill 442-31COR in the third reading, but I'd like the opportunity to speak on it, please.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 442-31COR is an act to develop an economic incentive program by establishing the Talafulfo Riverwalk projects for economic development and enhancement programs in southern Guam. If you can recall, Madam Speaker, in previous session that we had, there was a, for lack of a better term, companion legislation that this body had unanimously supported in the establishing of a similar program for the purposes of reviewing and studying the possibility of establishing a riverwalk project in the Menyundo or the Agania River area. And this legislation here proposes that same type of study for the Talafulfo River. You know, if you look along the banks of the Talafulfo River, currently right now, there's there, there are agriculture, aquaculture activities that are going along that area. There's also a little, I guess, a river tour, you know, that takes, I guess, customers by riverboat upriver to a little tumoral village. And in looking at ways so that we can possibly find ways to spur economic activity and growth in that area, but more importantly, it's also to take advantage and see how we can utilize, you know, the banks of the river and spur the economic development along the banks of the river, is establish a program, establish a working group with various entities to include the landowners of the area, the stakeholders, you know, those individuals that live in southern Guam, the mayor's council, and of course, the Guam Economic Development Authority, to see the, look at the possibility of being able to put together or construct a riverwalk development that, you know, could, I guess, not just enhance the area, but also provide economic activity that can, you know, and growth and some incentive and some, some, I guess, opportunities for our residents in southern Guam, and most especially, you know, those residents and those individuals that own the land and that are currently farming both, you know, fish, shrimp, and vegetables in that area. You know, I liken this activity to saying, you know, it's opening it up, you know, not just for tourist attraction, but also for historical and agriculture, tourism type activity that's down in that area. So what this bill basically, all it says is to establish a working group. I've already had conversations with both GITA and with the U.S. Department of Administration, USDA, who in fact has funding that's available for these kinds of studies to be conducted. And the good thing about it is that if, once the study is completed, you can actually use the results of that study as part of the application process for a low to no interest loan or even a grant to be able to develop this. You know, part of the process too is to look at ways to develop it and so that it can be self, it could be not just revenue generating, but it also could pay for itself. So these are just some of the opportunities and possibilities that this legislation would hope to provide. Again, it's just establishing it, it doesn't say that it's gonna build it, you just established a working group to explore the feasibility and the possibility of constructing a riverwalk project for economic development. I asked my colleagues for their support in this matter in previous legislation, in previous session, my colleagues did unanimously support a similar measure for the Agania Riverwalk, and I'm asking for the same for this area as well. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. On the motion, anyone who would like to speak on the motion 442, on the motion to send 442-31 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. 494, I'd like to recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I ask that Bill 494-31COR be placed in the third reading file, and I ask to be allowed to speak on it.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill Number 494-31 is an act to amend subsection 3132, chapter 3, title 5 GCA, relative to adding veterans to the better customer service policy. Madam Speaker, one of the stakeholder groups, one of the critical groups in this community that I have just become familiar with and I'm learning more and more about are the veterans, the veterans and their families. For the last, I'd say maybe eight months, I've been attending the Veteran Commission meetings and spending a lot of time listening to what their issues are and understanding what they believe they need help in, listening to all of the clear support that we get from the federal level and regional level and the local level for these families. Their needs are wide-ranging from transportation to housing to medical, it's wide and it's varied, and there's different programs that are in effect to help them. And as we listen, as I listen to the veterans, I see that their family members are standing right next to them or sitting right next to them. A lot of time they're nodding, and a lot of time, while they're clearly proud of their service, there's an element of sadness. And so as we talk, whether it's at a picnic or at a party or at a meeting, to me, a really simple gesture, which has gotten honestly mixed reactions, and I look forward to this body deliberating this whole idea of allowing veterans to go to the front of the line in any customer service situation throughout the government. So then if they walk into, for example, Revantax or DOA, Department of Administration, and they need to do their business, as a veteran, they can move to the front. Now, the questions raised are, how do you know they're a vet? Well, they'll say they're a vet. If you want them to show you their ID card, they can, or they may. And frankly, many people like myself, I am 55, and I am allowed to go to the front of the line as a manumco, but I don't, because I don't have to. I choose not to. I have a son with a disability, and there are times when we probably could go to the front of the line, but frankly, we work it out where he doesn't even have to be in those lines, where we'll figure it out, where we'll go stand in the line for him in his absence. This is a really small gesture, and for those that I have offended by saying, if you are a vet, if you have served, if you have protected the nation, if you have gone to battle and had your family sacrificed alongside of you, so that we can speak as we do today, so that women can actually vote and be elected into office, so that all families count, so that all colors, all faiths, all people make a difference. It is the work of the veteran, it is the defense of our nation that has allowed us to do that. So for me, Madam Speaker, very small gesture of please, go to the front of the line is the intent of this measure. Please, go to the front of the line, and thank you very much for the service, for your sacrifice and for what you have done. It is not any money, it's not any growth in program service, it is simply a very basic, simple gesture of please, go to the front of the line. And with that, Madam Speaker, again, I look forward, we know that Guam is at the top of our nation per capita of those of us serving military service. We know that we spill blood, we know that we honor them as they come home, and what I want this to be is for those that do come home and as they continue to integrate back into their, into our community, that it's just a small gesture of respect. Please, after all you've done with us and for us, please go to the front of the line. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On Bill 494, on the motion, 494. Speaker Panglinen, do you?
Madam Speaker, just to avoid any misunderstanding when people try to move to the front of the line when this bill passes, perhaps the author might just wanna, if she would yield to the question, and the question would be, you know, we have now priorities of who can be at the front of the line, persons with disabilities, senior citizens, now veterans. How do we decide then, just so that the veteran doesn't feel, or the senior citizen now feels that they're being pushed to the back of the line and we're putting the veteran first, how do they decide? Is it first come, first served, of those three first in line, or do we do three lines so that they can all be at the front, or just so that there's no misunderstanding out there and we give clear directions to the departments and agencies that have to implement this?
Senator, do you, you owe to the question?
Yes, ma'am, and I thank the speaker for that question because that really was raised, how are we gonna decide? And the conversation is, and I don't know if we need to actually put the language in there, is that Department of Administration and the other agencies will determine how that works best for them. I honestly think that it would be first come, first served. I don't see a veteran or one of our seniors pushing somebody and saying, hey, I got here first. I really see the element of respect. If you came here first, please go to the front of the line. And again, Madam Speaker, and I know this is not what the question was, but I really don't see everyone fighting to get to the front of the line. It's just, but to answer the question, it would be, I would think, who gets there first, and if we need to put that language in there, I'm very supportive of that.
Okay, so why don't we take a brief recess? Speaker Panglinen, are you done with your questions or any comments? You're done and you're satisfied with the answer, or you want, you're waiting for the author to provide additional answer to your question? Yeah. Okay. So Senator Yamashita, do you have?
And so I have an amendment to offer.
Okay, so you may proceed.
On page seven, no, I'm sorry, on line seven, page two.
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. Veterans are allowed to move to the front of the line for customer service requests and remittance of payments, and this is the addition, the amendment, and be treated on a first come, first served basis. And that will answer the question of who comes first, or who will be serviced first.
And be treated on a first come, first served basis. Okay, on that amendment, no objections? So ordered. So on the motion then to place 494, the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. I'm going back again to the members who are ready to make a presentation. Senator Guthers, you're recognized on Bill 532.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill 532 for discussion on the reading, third reading.
On the third reading?
Yes.
Yes, and you'd like to discuss it?
Yes, thank you.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and colleagues, good afternoon. Bill 532 is an act that would amend Guam Code Anticipated, specifically chapter 17, title 3, relative to the presentation of initiative measures. This act would be known as the Initiative Reform and Transparency Act of 2012. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, initiatives that have been put forth before the electorate over the last several years really should contain full disclosure of genesis and intent. When we think about the great expense and the diligent effort to the Guam Election Commission and the processes and standards which the commission must assume and adhere to when it entertains an initiative, there should be a burden of transparency and accountability on those entities or individuals that wish to present initiatives before the people. Otherwise, the voting public takes on the responsibility of trying to find out the origins and intentions of a proposal. But this should be a shared responsibility between the offers of the initiative and those that must consider the initiative. Madam Speaker, it serves the public interest to require that proponents of any initiative placed before the people of Guam be forthcoming, available, and that proponents be held accountable for any initiative they offer to the people of Guam by providing accurate information about its origins, intention, and purpose. The reason this bill was drafted, Madam Speaker, is to clarify certain standards to ensure transparency and accountability regarding matters put before the electorate by any individual, organization, partnership, corporation, committee, or business. The Initiative Reform and Transparency Act, which this bill is titled, would begin the process of easily identifying origins, intentions, and purposes behind all future initiatives, should this bill become law, so that the voters of Guam have the opportunity to be fully informed about any initiative proposed for their consideration, and those proposing initiative make full disclosure to the people. Now, all of us know that we had quite an unusual experience this last initiative go around. There was a lot of mystery surrounding the initiative, the proponent of the initiative or the proponents of the initiative chose really to be behind the scenes. People of Guam did not know much about the entity that filed for this initiative, all they knew was that this entity had hired lawyers to speak for them. And there was a lot of concern from the community expressed quite significantly that we cannot act on something without adequate information and understanding who's behind or what's behind a proposed initiative. Since the initiative activity, which didn't pass this last round, you know, ladies and gentlemen, we have learned that the organizations or the person behind this initiative spent lots of money, but did not provide full disclosure to the election commission as to specifically how this money was spent. What we learned was that they, in fact, paid people to circulate petitions and paid per signature a fee to those that circulated petitions. We learned that they spent lots of money on the media, they spent lots of money on attorneys, but they didn't really break it down into specific amounts, again, lacking transparency and openness. What this bill does is it provides a mechanism similar to someone that runs for public office to provide full disclosure by filing financial disclosure statements with the election commission and clearances with the election commission, and the clearances, of course, are court clearance, police clearance, to ensure that individuals behind an initiative don't carry with them convictions for crimes of moral turpitude or worse. And in addition, the initiative bill would also address questions about public input, would provide a requirement that those promoting an initiative must provide a fiscal note to accompany their initiative that they themselves would develop to show what the costs would be to people of Guam should their initiative pass, or what direct benefit would come to the people of Guam should the initiative pass. At the same time, it requires the appropriate government office to provide a fiscal note on the potential financial impact should an initiative pass. It also provides for shareholder and member disclosure, those behind the initiative must basically file with the election commission, and their names must be disclosed. It also provides that the initiative process develop with the election commission's effort the proper forms to be filled out and filed with the commission that can be open to public review and scrutiny. So basically, this bill tightens up on the current initiative process. It doesn't, it's not intended to discourage initiatives, but it's intended to ensure that initiatives are offered up by reputable entities and individuals who are known and made known to the community, and that they file appropriate disclosure information with the election commission, and that they are available to express commission, and that they are available to express themselves and share with the community the rationale in promoting their initiative. Madam Speaker, I think it's time for this bill. This bill would apply to all initiatives. It's not specifically directed at one industry. It's intended to serve as a guideline for all initiatives. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Palacios, you're recognized. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I support the intent of this bill, but I look at this bill and its application, Madam Speaker, and it has no limit. What about initiative to reduce, let's say, the legislative salary, or to abolish a certain commission? How would this then limit the ability of the people of Guam to pursue another attempt to accomplish what they want? Now, we're not necessarily talking here about gambling issues. We're talking about all initiative under the sun. And if the first try failed, the people of Guam have no other time until 10 years after that. And I'm not very comfortable with that, because there are issues that collectively the people of Guam can get together, not forming any corporation, not having any officer, president, secretary, just together get a petition going and present an initiative. Again, to abolish, let's say, whatever commission, whatever board, or whatever other thing that this government pursues, through the initiative process, the equivalent of law can be passed directly by the people. This is restrictive, in my own opinion, because, you know, you have to disclose your finances and everything else, and your partnership and other things, if I want to look at this. And I want to look at this at how this would limit then the ability of individual people living in Guam to change the law, or to change the way things are done within our government. That's my concern about the applicability of this, should this become law. And I just want to raise that perspective, so that we can look at this in that perspective, in a wider scope, Madam Speaker. That's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to, of course, speak a little bit on the bill, but I also first wanted to just go ahead and begin with an amendment that I would like to offer, and that would be on page three, line nine, where it says "initiative author," and it currently reads "the qualified proponent of the initiative, comma, and organization, partnership, corporation, committee, or business he or she represents, if applicable, must be identified." And I just wanted to be very clear that we're talking about the individuals associated with the organization, partnership, corporation, or committee, not just the committee itself, not just who the committee is and what the name of the committee is. So I would like to add, after the word "and" would be officers of the organization, partnership, corporation, committee, or business he or she represents. So that it would read "the qualified proponent of the initiative, comma, and officers of the organization, partnership, corporation, or committee."
On the...
Page three, line nine.
Nine-nine. On the amendment to add after initiative and those words that Speaker Panglinen said, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Just please ensure the clerk gets that in writing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the other concern I have, or maybe, and maybe I can just kind of think out loud while I discuss the bill, is the presentation of, in 17203, and it says, "The election commission shall submit the initiative to the electors after certification at the next regularly scheduled general election." And I know that, I'm pretty sure the intent here is that the next regularly scheduled election, every two years, that biennial, I guess, is biennial the word that says every two years?
Yes.
That is the word. So maybe, just to be perfectly clear here, that it would be after certification at the next regularly scheduled biennial general election, so that that's the only general election that it can, that these initiatives can be presented to the general public.
So on that motion to add biennial after scheduled, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the other concern I have, of course, is 17204. The initiative now must be approved by 50-plus-one of all voters who go to the polls to vote in the special or general, again, we should just make it consistent, general, regularly scheduled biennial general election, where it just says general election, to be consistent with the earlier amendment we made.
On that motion to insert the word biennial before general, no objections, so ordered?
The other concern I have is 17204, and how this would be read in conjunction with the current methodology for counting the votes cast for towards an initiative. We have, and again, Mr. Speaker, most people kind of just say Guam is unique. It really isn't unique. Guam's not the only place in the country in which, in an initiative, if you don't cast a ballot but you go to the polls, that ballot is counted as a no. It's, we're not unique. We're not the only jurisdiction in the country that has that provision. On Guam, we call it the Santos Amendment, but it really is a provision that ensures that we get the widest participation and that the community really expresses an opinion on it, and that a no, a blank vote is a no vote, it's not an affirmative vote, towards implementing that initiative. And that is to preclude superminorities, basically because of low participation, from initiating a policy within a community in which the community is, if you want to say ambivalent, then their ambivalent means they don't want it. And so I just want to be very, very clear, and maybe the amendment would be that this be read by legal counsel, and that it be determined that if this is in any way in contradiction with the current methodology for counting votes cast towards an initiative, most specifically the Santos Amendment, then the technical amendment be made to this so that it does not change that methodology of counting the votes towards that election. Other, you know, rather than recessing, if that's...
Would you like the Senator De Yod to question if that was her intent?
Yes.
To circumvent the...
No.
Senator Guthers?
Right.
Okay. So on the Speaker's amendment to provide that the legal counsel make sure that this section is consistent with the current law with respect to what we call the Santos Amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Dusmasi, and thank you very much, Senator Guthers, for this piece of legislation.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. Minority Leader, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I recognize the, I guess, the reason and the concern that was brought forward, why this legislation was brought forth. However, you know, Mr. Chair, I have to share the same and express the same sentiments, the concerns that was brought on by the good senator from Chalaborda, Chalapago. While we recognize that, for lack of a better term, the nuisance that was caused as a result of continually having to deal with a gambling initiative, my concern is that this is all encumbersome, and it's an umbrella for every initiative that may come before the people of Guam. You know, to include initiatives and measures, you know, I think that what we're doing is we're looking, we're putting personalities in place of where we shouldn't be putting and trying to create the legislation. Down the road, what's going to occur when there is a good faith effort and there is a need, and there is a desire by this community to be able to put forth an initiative and a, you know, and just the rigors that everybody would have to go through? I know what we're trying to, what we're trying to avoid here, and I agree that, you know, it became a nuisance. But that's the price of democracy. And there could be measures that could be put in place to ensure that we recognize and we identify those individuals truly behind initiatives and truly behind measures. I recognize and I agree with the fact that maybe before we even think of the measures being put out and as far, for, and signatures are gathered, I like the idea of the village meetings. I like that idea. But there's just maybe other things, other, I guess, now new rules that we're going to set in place, that is going to have an unintended, the unintended consequences, it's going to, it may hamper, and it may discourage the ability of the public itself. We are a member, representative of democracy. The members, we, the members here, we represent, there's 15 of us, while we represent the interests and the voices of the community, there are times that the community themselves want to be able to deal with the issues. And my concern is that with this initiative, while I recognize why this was done, and I agree with maybe some of the issues and some of the rules that can be set in place for any initiative, I agree that we shouldn't, we need to know who wrote the initiative. Okay? And if there was a business entity or there's an organization behind it, who are they? I agree that before, you know, that there should be public input, and that this public input, you know, be done prior to getting signatures on a petition. I agree that, you know, with regards to certain initiatives, that if they fail, we should put a time limit as to when it can be. But, you know, what if the initiative actually fails by the slightest of margins? We're assuming that if it's 50 percent plus one, that if they fail that, okay, then we're saying, you can't bring it up for another 10 years. But what if they fail by the slightest of margins? What if it was so controversial and so, that, you know, we just needed a little bit more time to talk about it, that it could have passed, or it could have only overwhelmingly Why didn't you, you know, in my mind, I'm just thinking, why don't we make it so that if, if it failed by a margin of 70 percent? Okay? Then, in a scale, but if it, by the slightest of margins, we're going to stop that from being reconsidered by the public? We don't even do that in this body. And then, when you look at the financial disclosure requirements, in one section it says, in section 17212-point-one, it says, "Any person, individual stakeholders, businesses, which receives funds or make expenditures, must file and register, must register and file a financial disclosure report with the commission." But then when you look at 72, or 17213, police and court clearances, it says, "At the time of filing the initiative, any person, shareholders, members of organizations, community, business, which expects to receive or make expenditures." That's pretty broad. And there could be the argument that if the individual, you know, at the time of the filing wasn't around or didn't believe in it, but then later on decides that he wants to, or she wants to be a part of it, by this, by the way this reads, you know, when you're in the third or the fourth quarter, you can't play. We're severely limiting the democracy. And I don't, I don't bring this, these concerns up because I don't, I'm not, I'm not supportive of the idea. There're just, there're just too many what-ifs, and the unintended consequence that this may have with other initiatives. And it's, and again, it's, like we had in a conversation, previous bill, about wanting to use certain language, you know, when we were talking about the whole massage parlor thing. Okay? Now, I don't want, because that was the example, okay? I'm not inferring in any way to this bill. Okay? But then when we had a difficulty in being able to ensure and identify what a massage parlor meant, because we wanted to make sure that no sex trade practices were there, what is an initiative? And that's my concern. And, yes, it's needed, but I think we've got to be very careful also on how we move forward, if we're going to move forward on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Do you have any amendments? No amendments? Are there any other senators wishing to speak on the bill? If not, Senator Guthers, do you wish to close?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. Chairman, I welcome all amendments. That would only strengthen the bill, and I think improve upon the bill, so I'm very much amenable to amendments that would help address any concerns that any senators have. Again, I wish to state that this is not intended to limit anyone's ability to initiate an initiative. It simply puts into place a process that is intended to protect the overall interests of the people of Guam, and to make sure that the process is fair and reasonable. Right now, the process is not fair and reasonable. Right now, the process is open just about to anything with no disclosures that make any sense, that provide any guidance to the people of Guam. I dare say that if an entity or a person really wants to put forth a serious initiative that would be good for the people of Guam, they should be willing to stand behind it, be visible about it, disclose everything they're doing to get it supported by the people, face the people and speak to the people and interact with the people. This would really be in their interest to do. But we saw what happened in the recent experience and some of the experiences before that. A lot of money thrown at something behind the scenes, veiled, and that's what scared the people. That's why the people didn't vote for the initiative, because it wasn't something they felt comfortable about because of the way it was done. And unfortunately, at this point in time, our election laws, particularly those dealing with initiatives, don't require the kind disclosures that we should all have available to us. So I'm hoping my colleagues... So I'm hoping my colleagues will see fit to support this. If they wish to make amendments now or later, they can do that. Uh, there is one thing I'd like to state, the last line on the last page, please delete that, Mr. Speaker. It's not necessary.
On the motion to delete-
17215.
Yeah, on the motion to delete line nine of page seven, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. So ma'am, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to encourage my colleagues to support the bill, make amendments to it if they wish to at this time, but let's consider it.
Let me recognize Senator Rodriguez.
Just a point of information.
Yeah.
You know, on the one we just moved to strike, I believe what, that, that was there because the numbers, um, where it were changed, the numbering were changed. So if you see the five on 17215 that was underlined, I guess, but that's something that could also be done through, um, technical, right? Yeah. So just, just a point of information.
Well, since I already gavelled it, is there a motion to reconsider the action in deleting?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Your intent is not to delete the section, but just not change it.
Yeah, so on the motion to reconsider the action where we deleted line nine of page eight, there are no objections, so ordered. And so on the motion to ask the legal counsel to determine whether or not that language is necessary, not, then she would recommend to delete it. On that motion, no objections, so ordered. Are there no objections? I'd like to go back to Senator Blas. Senator Blas?
Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, you know, one of, again, one of the concerns that I have here is with regards to, it's referenced to section 17202, found on page three. It says, "If an initiative measure is not approved by voters in any election, no initiative measure proposing substantially similar or substantially related subjects shall be submitted to voters for at least three, 10 years now after the day such, such election." And, and again, I, I bring back the scenario of, of an initiative that basically fails to pass, I mean, didn't beat the 50% plus one, but was just narrowly, was, was narrowly defeated. And, um, I, I guess what I, what I want to do is basically add on line 17, "If an initiative measure is not approved by more than 60% of the voters in any election, in any election." That way, it sets a standard. Is if it does not, 60%, if, 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 uh, if more than 60% of the voters say no. Okay? There's, there's clearly, you know, a, a, a separation when you're talking about total amount, amount of voters. Then I can see in as far as giving the 10-year restriction. But if it's something that, that's, that's within that, I, I don't, I don't think we should limit the exercise of democracy.
So on the motion, uh, page three, line 17, so the new sentence would read, "If an initiative measure is not approved by-"
More than 60%.
More than 60% of the, and then the rest will follow. Get that passed? On that amendment, there are no objections, so ordered.
Secondly, and it's a little bit of a concern here, it's actually on page four, but it's for 17204, um, majority of quite effective date. Page four on, starting on line seven, it says, "Any language in contravention, in contravention of this section that calls for an earlier date of implementation shall be disallowed by the commission." My issue and my concern here is, does the commission have that authority? I think that it's very clear already that we have already stated that it shall not take effect no, no earlier than the first day of the month of February of the succeeding year after certification. Any initiative, that it's not going to take effect until then. And then for us to say, "Any language in contravention, in contravention of this section that calls for an earlier date of, shall be disallowed by the," that's a basically saying and notwithstanding. So one concern is it leaves it open. Another concern is whether or not they have authority. I'm, I'm a little bit uneasy about that language and I, I moved to, to strike that last sentence.
On the motion to strike the sentence, uh, page four, line seven, beginning with "any language in contravention of this section," all the way down to "commission." On that amendment, there are no objections, so ordered.
My, my next amendment, Mr. Chair, is actually in page five in 17213. So that 17213 and seven, and the requirement put out in 17212 point one are consistent with each other. It's on page five, line five, where it says, "which expects to receive funds or make expenditures." I would like to, uh, remove the words "expects to" and so it says, "which receives funds or makes expenditures."
On that amendment, to delete the words "expects to," and so to read "receives," and then to make, uh, yeah, yes, make, makes. On that motion, there are no objections, so ordered.
Mr. Chair, I just, I, I want to ask for some, I guess, some flexibility in this thing because, and, and, and for the purposes of, I'm not, not wanting, I'm wanting to make this much better, but for the purpose of moving this thing along, is if we can reconsider the possibility that if we do send it to the third and after the discussions, we can bring it back up to the second to make some additional amendments to this.
Or perhaps we could just leave it on second reading.
Okay? So, thank you very much.
Yeah. Is the sponsor amenable to just keeping the bill on the second reading file, giving Senator Blas some opportunity to make additional amendments or? So, so on the, on the request to keep the bill on the second reading file, there are no objections, so ordered. The next bill on the agenda is supposed to be bill 540, sponsored by Senator Rodriguez, but instead he's asking that we entertain his other bill, 505. You ready for 540? Okay, so I recognize Senator Rodriguez to make a presentation on bill 540.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place bill 540 on the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss it.
On the motion with some discussion, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, bill 540, it's an act to add the proposed fee schedule for the systems of care, children's services to any existing Department of Mental Health and substance abuse fee schedule. Um, as you know, Mr. Speaker, we've adopted a fee schedule for the Department of Mental Health after 16 years of not having any. And what was not included there was the, um, a fee schedule for children's services. And so we received this, um, exhibit A, which is attached to the bill, is a proposed fee schedule for children's services that was provided to us by the department. They had some, um, meetings about this where providers and stakeholders were invited. And so, um, in an effort to expedite this so that we can ensure that it's part of the fee schedule, I've introduced this measure and asked for the, um, the body's support in, in ensuring that the children's fees are also established within, uh, mental health. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to just make one amendment, um, on exhibit A. This is at the, uh, a request of mental health on page two of exhibit A, if we can delete, um, the service of psychotherapy, as this was already incorporated on the initial mental health fee that we adopted last month. That's correct. To the next page, where it ends on fees. That's correct. That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first I want to thank Chairman Palacios and his committee staff and the Attorney General's office for making this bill possible. Uh, first, I'd like to make a motion to move, uh, move, uh, bill 23731 as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary on the third, and I'd like to speak on it, please.
On the motion to place bill 237, and the version is as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, um, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I, I, Mr. Speaker, once again, I'd like to thank the Chairman Palacios and his committee staff and the Attorney General for making this bill possible. Amended bill 23731 is patterned after the blacklisting laws of the state of Arizona. And the amended version of this bill strikes a balance between protecting workers from vindictive, unscrupulous former, former employers, while at the same time allowing employees, employers, the ability to obtain factual and objective information from prospective employers, uh, employees from former employers. And every state has laws that prevent blacklisting of people for employment purposes. You know, at this, we're, we're living in, in, in times where unemployment is high and opportunities are very limited. And one of the cruelest acts that one person can do to another is to use unscrupulous tactics to render a person unemployable by falsely impeaching on their character, their work history, their ethics. You know, it's one thing to say that to give true information, it's another to give false information. And this bill does not prevent employers from disclosing poor, poor work habits and in employee's reference, and it also provides employers with certain protections as long as the employer acts in good faith. It is this balance that makes the amended version of 23731 a better bill for our workers, our business, and our community. And I ask my colleagues for their support of this measure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. On the, on the motion for bill 237, any discussions? If not, on the motion to place this bill on the voting file, the third reading file, rather, Senator Ada, do we just send it down? Okay. No objections, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator Ada. The next bill is bill 417, and I recognize Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, uh, bill 417, the co-sponsor of this bill is also, uh, Mr. Speaker, Dr. Yamashita, who's very passionate about looking for ways to continue to improve our services to the, for the Manamku and the, you know, those persons with disabilities. In fact, we just passed bill 511, uh, recognizing that and continuing to strengthen the service for this, uh, group of people. Now, bill 417, uh, Mr. Speaker, continues to add on more, I guess, efficient service and more adequate service to persons with disabilities. Mr. Speaker, two bills we passed in the last legislature, bill, uh, public law 30-99. At that time, this law now requires the Department of Revenue and Taxation, for example, to issue license plate or some kind of indication on a vehicle that the person, the driver or the operator, uh, has a disability or a special need. And this law came about as a result of some misunderstanding which led to some conflict between first responder individuals and persons with disabilities who probably have a speech impairment or hearing impairment and the misunderstanding of the condition. So public law 30-99 addressed that. Then came public law 30-171, which now requires, of course, all agencies, the government of Guam and cooperation on other entities to allow, to move to the front of the line, persons with disabilities and persons with special needs. Those two laws. Now, this bill now, Mr. Speaker, bill 417, what it proposes to do is to add another section, uh, on the article one, chapter 41, title 17 of the Guam Code Annotated, which is actually to mandate or to require this division of integrated services with, for individuals with disabilities, to develop a certification program and fees pertaining there to pursuant to the AAA process, to include, to include certification levels, performance standards, and training targets that would ensure government of Guam employees are capable of providing services to individuals with disabilities in a manner with respect and high regard. Such government employees shall include but not be limited to customer service personnel and, um, uniform personnel, first responder, of course. This is authorized to permit other government agencies and public and private educational institutions to provide such training or orientation relative to providing services to individuals with disabilities. And however, this is still is the authority in certifying whether those participants actually adequately, adequately receive such training. So the education part of it, the training part of it, may be provided by a private source, provided that this is still approved, the program. So I would envision that the program would be approved in advance and then they approved the program would be available, uh, to take, to take by anybody, to be taken by anybody. Mr. Speaker, this policy, I mean policymakers, as we are, must continue to find ways to improve services to individuals with a disability or a person who has a special need. Individuals with a disability or with a special need have become more and more mobile nowadays and more and more independent. No longer do they spend most of their time at home or just waiting for a relative to come pick them up and go do some errands. Now they actually are more independent and they go out. So this really presents now a challenge to our current setup with how these individuals are serviced. And it's time, the time has come that we prepare those who are face to face with these individuals, who provide services within the government of Guam, receiving payments, processing applications, giving directions, that they know how to recognize persons with a special need or persons with disabilities and be trained, at least with basic knowledge and skills, to be able to respond and, and, and service these people in, in the best way that, that they could. And so this is actually the essence of bill 417, is to enhance, to continue to equip our, our employees within the government of Guam to be able to provide this service in a more adequate and more efficient fashion and, and in a more dignified fashion. And with that, I ask my colleagues, of course, to consider and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Can we get a motion to-
And I, I move that this bill, 417, be placed on the third reading file for additional precautions if need be.
So on the motion to place bill 417 in the third reading file, okay, Senator Palacios, you're recognized to give some discussion. Just get you ready to do that. On the motion, any further, Senator Yamashita, the chair recognizes you at this time.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to, um, share some thoughts on bill 417-31COR. It is with great honor that I am a co-sponsor of Senator Adolfo Palacios Senior on this measure. As, um, previous speakers said, uh, or shared, that more and more people of disabilities are actually being integrated. And to help them being integrated, to move from the realm of entitlement to a realm of opportunity, those require everyone to better understand the way, um, the way we can best accommodate, the way we can best encourage, the way we can best actually include them in life across all realms on our island. And many times, whether it be in the classroom or whether it be at a store, whether it be at a bank, or whether it be at a government agency, there are many service providers who do not intend to offend or insult, but mostly their behavior is such because they are unaware, they do not know. And so this whole- And so, this whole idea of let us increase awareness, let us provide training, is something that I think would really help the employees as well as help the customers and the community. I also think that one of the consequences of such initiatives such as this is it would better help all of us identify who might need more help. And this training program would also say, if you see somebody that needs help, then you can ask them to contact this person, or they would make a phone call themselves. I believe right now, a person who blew up the theater in one of the states is actually going through a court proceeding right now, and only could find out that that person with a disability, if he had been helped when it was first acknowledged, perhaps more people would be alive right now. The case of Jason in Arizona, the case in Gigo, Darsen, these are all people of disabilities. If we had understood a little bit better and reached out, perhaps situations would have been different today. I also want to say in line with this, the GPD, the GFD, the first responders Attorney General's Office, has actually made huge progress in developing general orders so that they are already moving forward and saying that if a person with a disability is met with during a time of due rest, they are taking steps to make sure their first responders have the kind of training required to appropriately address the situation. So, this particular measure talks about our government of Guam employees, our strong core of government employees who are there to provide support and services to all of our people. And so, it is with support and is with honor that I stand in support of this measure that was authored by Senator Palacios. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Any other senator wishing to speak on Bill 417? So, on the motion to place this bill in the third reading file, Senator Palacios, would you send it down? Yeah, no objections, so ordered. Next bill is Bill, go ahead and go to Bill 503. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill 503-31 as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary be moved to the third reading file for purpose of discussion and debate, if I may give an overview.
You may proceed, Senator.
Basically, Bill 503 proposes, Madam Speaker, to continue child support to minors who are receiving child support and who are still in high school even after the age of 18 years old. Currently, under the current practice and the general policy is that a person, I guess, would, the child support will not apply to minors who have reached the age 18 or who have been married, who have been, I think, joined the military or emancipated and so forth. But Bill, there are instances, and in fact, this was brought to my attention by a mother from Agate, that the daughter would be 18 and still be in high school, and that means that the child support will terminate. And of course, under the current law, it would, it will. But Bill 503 proposes to grant that extension, provided, of course, that it is registered. And let me just read specifically what are the restrictions, because we have improved on the substitute bill, rather, on the original bill and came up with a substitute bill. And it says, if I may read on page, beginning on page two, "That child support entered by a court shall terminate by operation of law when the child on whose behalf the support is owed marries, becomes emancipated, or the latter reaching the age of 18, age of majority in this case 18, or graduating from high school or equivalent, but not to exceed the age of 19." So, even if there's an extension, it will be probably just portions of the high school until the individual, the minor graduate, are actually complete the requirement for high school diploma or GED or reach the age of 19, whichever comes first, then child support terminates. But here's the conditions, provided that the child remains in the custody and care of and resides with the custodial parents. Now, this is important because there are minors who have reached the age of 18 and then went about and lived maybe with friends or grandma or auntie or uncle. Now, that condition would not qualify. The individual actually has to, for this extension to be valid, the minor has to remain, even though reaching the age of 18, must remain with the custodial parent. If the child is still in high school and is due to turn 18 years of age during the school year, then the custodial parent shall inform the office of the Attorney General's Child Support Division no later than 30 days prior to the child's 18th birthday. So, there is a requirement for a notice in advance before the child reach 18. And then, of course, the custodial parent shall at that time submit to the AG's office an official certification of enrollment or attendance evidencing his or her child's active status as a student. And in the event the child is no longer enrolled as a student voluntarily or involuntarily, the custodial parents, and then again, shall within 10 business days notify the AG's office, upon which time the child support shall terminate. No provision, of course, contained in this amendment in this law shall apply to child support cases where a different arrangement has been agreed to between the custodial parent and the non-custodial parent. If they want to do it in a different way and it's approved by the court, then this extension doesn't apply. I guess if the absent parent want to continue to support, it's up to them at that point. And so, it, according to the, and then on the effective date of this one, on page four, beginning on line 11, the office of, again, this is another amendment that we made on the original bill, the office of the AG, within 30 days, calendar days following passage of this act, shall inform custodial parents and non-custodial parents concerning the provisions of this act. So, there will be a public notice and information given out to those who are affected by this. And the office of the Attorney General's Child Support Division shall further coordinate with the Superintendent of Education, or his authorities designated to ensure appropriate support is extended by the Guam Department of Education concerning attendance and certification and other things that may be required from the DOE. In the event the child turn 18 within 30 days following enactment of this act, the custodial parent shall submit information required by Section 2 of this act, again, to the office of the Attorney General. So, there are sufficient safeguards here to, I guess, to make this be a viable policy. I got some information from the office of the Attorney General, and as of, I guess, the most current information they're giving me with respect to children, rather minors who are, who will be 18 between now and December, which is actually more than half of the school year, is 270. But that doesn't mean that all of these are currently enrolled. I would imagine probably maybe half or maybe one-third of this. But in Guam, in all the child support cases and those participating, as we speak, 270 will be between 17 and past 18, between now and in August and December. So, I'm giving this information to give you an idea of the impact of this, that it is actually minimal with respect to, I guess, the impact that it would cause on the absent parent. And so, this is the bill, what it's all about is just extend that for those who are in high school awaiting graduation or completion of the program until they turn 18, rather, they turn 19, or until they graduate from high school, whichever comes first. And this is just to extend. This way, the minor will not have to worry about finding a part-time job for the remaining four or five months of his high school time to support himself or to support the, you know, the mother in this case, or the father with whomever that this child is staying. This would then allow him to concentrate on the remaining few months to complete the high school program. So, these are the, you know, the benefits that this bill offers. And with that, I ask my colleagues to consider this. It will benefit some of the custodial parents now and the children who are going to school right now. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Alina Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to share some thoughts on Bill number 503. I stand in full support of Bill 503-31 in that, you know, the rate of children growing up with one parent is incredibly high. Half of our marriages on our island dissolve. That doesn't mean that the children are less cared for, but what it does mean is that the support system changes. And while we might, while we don't want to say that nobody is irresponsible, the truth of the matter is there are irresponsible parents, and there are always children who need help. And as they go through high school and as they always need money, even for something as simple as a ticket for a game or a prom, or a ring for graduation, or just sometimes today, unfortunately, is money for food, the need for that continuous support is clear. And so, the idea that we shall provide support until they graduate is a very good message to our growing adolescents in that we will support you as much as we can, we will make it legal as long as we can, and we give you a good start. Madam Speaker, I have passed out an amendment. We spoke about this during the public hearing, and I had made notice that I would proffer this conversation on the floor when this bill made it to session floor. And the amendment essentially is while we have most of our kids, our high school students graduating at 18, perhaps 19, about 10% of us are actually identified special needs students. And with that being said, indeed, if we're saying, let's give extra support for our 18 to 19-year-old, what I would like to do in this amendment is to ensure that if you are a high school student in the special education realm, by law already, we allow our special ed kids to continue the high school experience until age 22, so that they have enough time, they have more time to transition into life beyond high school. And so, this merely states that this child support will not be terminated for those who are identified as special ed students who continue with their high school program. The order shall extend through age 22. If the child is still in high school and is due to turn 18 years of age or 21 for special education students during the school year, the custodial parent shall inform, and it's the same language that the author of this measure had just presented to us. So, Madam Speaker, this is to balance those who are labeled or in the world of special education, to say that as they too try to reach that milestone of high school graduation, as they too try to accomplish the accomplishment of a high school diploma, that they too shall receive support of the paying parent, that family member who is there not every day in their home, but is outside of their home, but is offering financial assistance and support in this manner. Madam Speaker, I hope that the senators in this hall will consider this measure and will support it. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, and everybody should have a copy of the amendment. Senator Palacios, on the amendment.
Just clarification, whether the age 22 and there's another age 21, whether this one is supposed to be, or they're supposed to be the same, that's all. I guess, we talked about shall extend to the age of 22, and then below that, it says to the age 21 years of age for special education. I think that there should be one of the same. I don't know whether there's a specific need for the 22-years-old and then the 21. I think we were down on line six and line seven. Just that, is that inconsistent or?
We're going to take a brief recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I deliberately chose to wait for our Oversight Chair, who has been responsible for monitoring and tracking the tourist attraction fund, and I want to begin by thanking her for presiding over this bill as well as the other co-sponsors of Bill 502. I was referring to Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes and co-sponsor Senator Tom Ada, Senator Palacios, who is our Oversight Chair for Law Enforcement, and Senator Gauthier as well. Madam Speaker, my first motion is to make Senator Barnes be the fifth co-sponsor.
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, having said that, I also want to say that Bill 502, it recognizes that because the tourist attraction fund is tracking above, collecting above projections, it's more important that we recognize how vital our visitor industry is to our economy and how we must protect the goose that lays this golden egg. And we do that by building on the efforts of the Guam Visitors Bureau as well as the Guam Police Department to protect our tourists. We've heard of crimes against tourist task force, we heard of Guam Visitors Bureau doing things by way of donating police vehicles and jet skis and whatever equipment that this organization needs in order to not only protect the tourists but also protect all of the people of Guam who frequent the Tumon area. But what this bill does, it recognizes that in order to have the entire island benefit from our tourism industry, we take $500,000 from the tourist attraction fund, we fund, we put that money into the operations of the Tumon precinct, and whatever, whatever appropriations are available to fund the Tumon precinct from, from the general fund, then that money then can be diverted to service the needs of GPD to take care of other areas throughout the island. And so, I, at this time, I'm pleased to present this bill that's been publicly heard, that also, Madam Speaker and colleagues, has the support of the Guam Visitors Bureau and also has the support of the Guam Police Department, to my recollection. And so, I thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation, and I thank all of our colleagues in advance for recognizing that the TAF, whenever, in this case, is collecting above projections, that this five hundred thousand dollars is, would be a welcome addition to the Guam Police Department, who we understand and we believe and are aware that they're struggling on a daily basis just to keep up with the public demands and all of their mandates. And so, this would be a welcome addition to whatever resources they already have. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the, on the motion, recognize Senator Munia Barnes and then Senator Palacios.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill number 502-dash-31. And I'd like to thank the good author of the legislation, the good senator from Agania Heights, for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this co-sponsorship. Madam Speaker, this bill is really important, as, as you know, as we continue to work hard in our tourist industry and working closely with the folks of the Guam Visitors Bureau, but more importantly, with the stakeholders, one of the main concerns that have been brought up was the concern about the safety and protection of our tourists who come and visit us. And as you know, we've had several incidents that happened more recently, and this legislation will give the opportunity to show the folks within the travel industry that Guam is very serious about promoting its destination, but more importantly, so for protecting and safeguarding its tourists who come to visit our beautiful tropical island paradise. Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask, I'd like to proffer an amendment based on some of the recommendations that were heard at the public hearing, and if you can just give me one minute to talk to the, I mean, thirty seconds to talk to the author, because there was a recommendation from GVB that would be included here, and I just want to make sure that I talk to the author about this recommendation, if I may?
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Just, Madam Speaker, I just moved then that this bill be set, stay in the second reading file, and I'll work with the Oversight Chair of GVB to offer the amendment, and when we come, when we are prepared, I'll ask you to come back to it.
Okay. So, it would stay in its place, it would not lose?
And we'll also check on the fiscal note.
Yes, okay. So, no objections, so ordered. So, we'll move on then to Bill number 505. Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place 505 on the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss it.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 505, as substituted by the Committee on Health, comes at the request of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. What it does, Madam Speaker, is establish, establishes rules and regulations to implement the monitoring of pharmaceutical-controlled substances to the establishment of electronic database and reporting system to prevent the misuse, abuse, and diversion of such drugs without interfering with its legal medical use. These rules and regs, Madam Speaker, has gone through the rulemaking process. We've had a hearing on it here, we've worked with the different stakeholders, and public health is ready to implement these rules and regs. They have the equipment, the software, to move forward, and all we need to do is pass this. I'd like to ask my colleagues, our colleagues, to support the passage of this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On, on the motion? For Bill 505? None? Oh, okay, thank you, Senators. On the motion then to send 505-dash-31 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker?
Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Now, with saying the House rules, I'd like to reorder the second reading file and to bring 535 to the top of the agenda.
535? Okay.
If you just hold your agenda upside down, then you'll be on the top.
Okay, so, when you say in the top, meaning for today, for discussion?
The next bill?
Okay, that's what I just want to make sure. Okay, so, we are there on Bill 53, well, with that motion, without any objections, so ordered, so ordered. 535, Senator Panglin, and you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move then that Bill 535-dash-31COR be placed in the third reading file, and I'd just briefly like to discuss the bill.
Yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 535 would allow the University of Guam to fold the existing loan of the Jesus and Cuena de Jonguero business building into their new financing for the other buildings at the University of Guam with the USDA. And what this will do is by folding this loan and refinancing it with the new financing through the bill that was earlier passed by this body, which allows it to work it through the foundation, it would then lower the existing debt service for that portion of the refinancing by half a million dollars and free up those resources for the University of Guam. So, it doesn't add new debt, it doesn't extend anything, it just allows it to be packaged with the new USDA loan that's being taken out by the University of Guam.
On the motion, Senator, oh.
I'd like to thank Senator Guthertz, of course, and yourself, for bringing this bill to our attention and working with us on this.
Thank you. On the motion, Senator Guthertz, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Very briefly, this bill is very important for the university. It will basically allow it to save about half a million dollars a year, which can be used to support other capital initiatives, probably their engineering facility and the student center. So, I hope our colleagues will join us and support this bill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, anyone else who would like the opportunity to speak? So, on the motion to send Bill 535-dash-31 to the third reading file without any objections, We have a few more minutes, I'm hoping that this will not be as long. Senator Guthertz, you're recognized on Bill 510.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill is a bill that was crafted to assist our mayors. As you know, our mayors are really the field marshals of the community. They work very closely with the people in the villages, in municipalities of Guam. And we all know they don't have a lot of resources, but it's quite magical, they're able to accomplish what they're able to accomplish without a lot of resources. The intent of this bill is to allow the mayors to carry over their unspent funds for the next fiscal year. And I know from interacting with the mayors and talking to my colleague Senator Barnes, that the mayors try very hard to really save their money and use it to help the village communities, particularly with little projects in the village, and they try to accumulate some of the savings. And then, unfortunately, when the legislature acts on the next fiscal year budget, we often don't let departments or agencies or entities like the mayor's council keep their carryover funds. But that really is the intent of this bill, to allow the mayors to carry over their funds, to continue the voting those funds to village projects. So, I ask my colleagues to please help out our mayors, help out our villages, and support this bill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, on 510, is anyone who would like to speak? Okay, there being none, and I, okay, Senator Guthertz, motion then to place Senator Munia Barnes as the third co-sponsor without any objections, so ordered. To send 510 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Okay, Senators, we're going to take, we're going to recess until tomorrow morning at nine AM.